Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 7, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand. Bow your heads.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for allowing us to be here today and to meet just the best things that is down in the Lord. Lord, we just thank you for the wonderful weather that we have today and for being able to live in this great county. Lord, just be with all those people out there that are sick, that are ill, both physically and mentally. Lift them up. Lord be with our armed services as they serve overseas and in this country. Lord be with us today and give us wisdom as we make these decisions. In your name we ask this prayer. Amen.
Okay, the first order of business today is to request public, this is a public hearings, so I recognize David Francis.
Good morning. I would start talking about the spring weather, but I'm afraid to jinx it, but it's been very nice, a nice weekend. Before you, I'd request a public hearing for the sale of the historic hospital at 12:30 North Main Street. The proposed sale is to the Landmark Group for affordable housing that will house seniors, veterans, and families. Any questions?
We've had several discussions about this, and hopefully it'll work this time in terms of the awarding of the tax credits, so, but this is a necessary step in that process. So, if there's no objection, we'll schedule a public hearing for March 21, 2016 at 5:30 PM in this building. So, Ira, would you make sure that takes place? Okay, thank you. All right, and then the second is a request for three public hearings. Recognize Ira Dove.
Yes, three public hearings and a special meeting called Special Meeting on March 28, beginning at 5:30 is what I'm requesting. That being so that you can follow and have things at the nighttime meeting, but also so that, given the amount of public interest it's likely to be in this, you'll have time to appropriately listen to the public. The three that we're calling for March 28, beginning at 5:30 would be the County Grounds Use Ordinance. In addition, calling for the Carrying of Concealed Weapons and Displaying of Firearms Ordinance. And for those who, I think I do need to say something, for those who aren't sure why that would also be called, presently you have a Carrying of Concealed Weapons and Displaying of Handguns Ordinance on the books. It needs to be revised and amended to comply more with state law. And so, that's really a revision and amendment of an ordinance that's already on the books to bring it in compliance with state law. We discovered that during the review of the County Grounds Use Ordinance that that would be the most prudent course.
Okay.
In addition, the Commercial Outdoor Sports Shooting Range Ordinance.
All right, and of course, no action would be contemplated until the first meeting in April.
Yes, that is what is anticipated. Please note that the Grounds Use Ordinance was previously set for March 21, so I am asking to go ahead and put it on the 28th with these others, because I think it makes sense with the Carrying of Concealed Weapons.
But there'll be no action on March 28, is what I'm saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any objection to that? Okay. Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
We'll schedule, if you would, these three public hearings on March 28 at 5:30 PM in this room. Okay, we'll move to the public comment session. I've got two requests. First is Ernestine Upchurch. Welcome.
Hello again. I'm Ernestine Upchurch, former senior citizen representative to the North Carolina Senior Legislature, and for several years I served on your area on Aging Commission over at Whittier. So, I come as a senior citizen, as a resident of Maggie Valley, as a lifelong resident of Haywood County, and I'm here with a concern about a position in our county government. I wrote you all a letter in December of 2014 concerning the possibility of changing the position of tax collector to an appointed by the county commission or whatever could be legitimately done to change the situation here in Haywood County. I read again in the newspapers in December of 15 that there's some issues that have arisen. I'm not talking about personalities, I'm talking about the need for the tax collector to be a legislated change from an elected position to one that is a hired position that the county commissioners, who are the leaders and the elected leaders of this county, would see fit to hire. And my reasons for this is that we have many educated, prepared people that could serve in this position. We validate education, and yet we remain the only state, as I understand this, correction, the only county in the state that still elects. And I don't have to tell you all, times have changed, so we need to look at a resume that would include experience, education, work history, character, the things that you all could hold accountable as you do in other hired positions such as county manager, et cetera. You need a team of unity, and you need accountability, and especially as a lifelong taxpayer. That's what I'm requesting, appealing, suggesting, anything that you can do to hear my reasoning behind this. Let's see, got one more thing here. Electronics have changed the tax collection position, because I paid my taxes online this year. But let me tell you this, I also was concerned, because I have a mortgage on a house, and that money has been collected all year in escrow, and if I read in the paper correctly, it wasn't turned over to the county in time. Well, you can check my taxpaying records, I always get there on time, I've never had to pay a late penalty. That's personal for me, but I'm thinking about the future of Haywood County, and I'm speaking on behalf of other senior citizens who care about the efficiency of our county government. I hope you will consider my request, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I agree that Haywood County should not be the only county in North Carolina that has an elected position of tax collector. I think it's time that we strongly consider asking for legislation that would make Haywood County consistent with the other counties in the state. It's a very important position, and it's no reflection on anyone who is currently there, but your points are well taken, Ms. Upchurch. Thank you. All right, the second person who is asked to speak is Ellen Pitt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me this time. Some of you know me in different ways, I wear a lot of different hats, I'm a registered nurse, an activist, a mad representative, and a grandmother, and musician, a lot of things, but I'm here today in one role, and that's as a grandmother, nothing more. Not long ago, I came here to this room for a candidate forum, and there was a lot of political rhetoric about education, schoolteacher pay, save, pleasant, and vote-getting topics, that's for sure. What is incredible is that there was not one single word mentioned about the most deadly epidemic in the history of not only this county, but of our country and our state. On February 20, the Charlotte Observer warned of the skyrocketing use of opioids in North Carolina, citing that more people are dying from opioid overdose in 2014 than in car wrecks. Law enforcement officials are seeing heroin at a level not seen in decades. National Public Radio discussed it all a few days later, warning that the mountains of North Carolina were the worst hit by this epidemic. In western North Carolina, we are known for Appalachian Ice, it's a particularly potent addictive form of methamphetamine. Add to that, the marijuana and the alcohol made so readily available. Along with the drug trafficking come the firearms carried by the traffickers, and the breaking, the entering, the theft, and all the other drug-related crimes. Children live in the homes where drugs are being used, produced, and trafficked. They are present during the sale and delivery process, they are present during violent confrontations over the money and the drugs, and the drugs and the firearms are readily available to them, even toddlers. These children are unsupervised while caretakers are passed out or out in the night dealing drugs, and they are often in the care of felons that they do not even know. All of the money in the household is being used for drugs, and the children are without medical, dental care, all kinds of care, because nobody in the house is sober enough to notice. I'm here today to provide you with information about the plot of one Haywood County child whose circumstances are certainly shared by hundreds of others, and to call your attention to the inappropriate, ridiculous response from the agency that they must rely on for help. I'm providing you a folder in the interest of the privacy of the child, and ask that you read the contents very carefully at some convenient time. As you read the letter from the agency, I would like for you to close your eyes and imagine that you were the one who received it. It is my opinion, formed after long years of dealing with this agency and my role as a grandmother, a registered nurse, a protector of the elderly, and as an advocate for children endangered by impaired drivers, that the investigative process should be completely removed from Child Protective Services and be transferred to law enforcement agencies. I've held that opinion through many years of interaction with this agency, and nothing has ever happened to change that opinion. These children are at our mercy, they're innocent, and they should be allowed the opportunities to succeed. Instead of agency policies, family units, and parents' rights being at the top of the priority list, you have to put these children first. They have the right not to die and not to be injured. Citizens have the right to voice their concerns without being insulted. I'll give you the folder, and Mr. Kirkpatrick, I did not prepare one for you, it might put you in the position of a conflict of interest. If it proves, after y'all discuss this, that it does not, I would appreciate it if you would review the contents of this folder.
Okay, you can just give those to Mr. Dove, and he'll give them to the commissioners. Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would care to speak? Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Bill?
I don't have any.
Kevin? Mike? Okay. All right, then we'll move to administrative and agency reports. We have an update from the Haywood Greenway Advisory Council. We have Erica Romanician. I never say that right. How do you pronounce it exactly?
No one ever does, it's all right. Romanician.
Oh, that's close, okay.
So, thank you. Thank you, good morning. As the new chair of the Haywood Greenways Advisory Council, first thing I'd like to say is thank you to Claire Carlton for her service as chair. So, according to our bylaws, the Board of Commissioners has two appointed positions, and we had two openings that the council has reviewed a number of folks, and I'm bringing to you two recommendations, and that is Martha Bradley, attorney at Cannon Law, and Jan Grossman, a hiker and consultant and resident of Haywood County. So, I bring those two names to you for approval.
Those on the agenda?
No, I did not know that that was, I thought this was simply an agency update, is what I've been drawing.
All right, we'll put those on the agenda for our next meeting as an action to be considered.
Okay.
If you'll give those names to the county manager, we'll include that in our next agenda.
All right, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But just while I'm up here, I'd like you to know that Elizabeth Teague is now the Town of Waynesville representative, replacing Marcy O'Neill, and then the Haywood County Help Department, Megan Hauser, is their new appointee, so, just for your information, and I guess I'll see you in a couple weeks.
You don't have to come back unless you just want to, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
So, will you coordinate that, Ira?
Yes, I'll take care of it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, next is, the second of the agency reports is an update from Mountain Mediation Services. We have the executive director, Lorraine Williams, with us, as well as Tony Beeman. Welcome.
Thank you all for having us today. We appreciate it. I'm Lorraine Williams, I'm the director at Mountain Mediation, and you all know Tony Beeman. He is one of our volunteer mediators, and also our, he's currently our treasurer for our board. Thank you all for having us, and we wanted to give you a little bit of an update about our services, so you would know what takes place over across the way. Haywood County Court is our busiest court. We provide district court mediations as well as community mediations for a variety of interests that people have. A lot of people still use criminal court as their conflict resolution method, and we have many fine volunteer mediators and some staff who help with that process. Seventy-six percent of the mediations here take place in Haywood County. Let's see, this is my first time using, I'm doing it, oh. How do I go to the next one? That's all right. Yeah, I will continue, y'all can look at the PowerPoint at another, at another time, I think y'all have copies of it. So, the, thank you. So, our services include mediations for district court?
Excuse me, if you would, pull the microphone down, so, there you go.
I am pretty sure, yes. Is that better?
I know some of the people in the back couldn't hear you.
Can you all, can you hear me over there, Mr. Upchurch? Is that better? Okay, thanks. So, as I was saying, we have district court mediation and community mediation, seventy-six percent of those take place here in Haywood County. We also provide Medicaid appeal services for much-needed health and mental health services. Our newest service is restorative justice services for youth, and those are funded through the JCPC, and this is our first year doing those, and we are pleased that the referrals are beginning to pick up a little bit after a winter of snow and things like that. And Rebecca Herbert is our case coordinator here in Haywood, and she is here today in the audience. Tony is going to tell you all a little bit, he's going to take you a little bit through some of our budget pieces that we have here on the PowerPoint.
Okay, good morning. We wanted to update you on our financial situation, and as well as to update the community about what we're doing in Mountain Mediation and sort of where we stand. As you'll see on your handout there, under the cost of services sheet, Haywood County Schools, and as we know with the cuts, proposed cuts with the school system, they have been giving us $10,000 a year to provide conflict resolution training for students. That's being cut out, apparently, and our expense for that is, certainly exceeds the income from that, and there's a little bit of money that comes from United Way, which we appreciate. Community and family mediation, we, there's a fee that we charge, $100, part of that goes to the, back to the state, part of it stays here with Mountain Mediation. We only bring in last year about $9,400, but it cost us almost $30,000 to provide that particular service. There was Medicaid appeals, we were breaking even on that, and with restorative justice, that was a $15,000 grant, and then some income contributions to that, so we're breaking even on that. But overall, we have a very tight budget, and like I said, we wanted to appeal to the community for our, for some support in helping us continue these programs. These are vital programs that we provide, and we help a lot of people resolve conflicts and help families reunite a lot of times, and people just restore friendships and those kinds of things when issues get in the way sometimes. And so, we do provide a very vital service, but with the cut in the schools, the financial contribution to us coming up, we're going to be, you know, really hurting, and so we're, we've been working, our board has been working very hard over this past year to work on restructuring and becoming more effective as a board, and looking at some fundraising efforts and those kinds of things. We'll be talking with the community over this next year, certainly in efforts to provide more funding for our programs, so that we can continue, you know, to provide these services. So, that's just a little bit of information for your consideration.
And I will just add to that, that this past year in Haywood, this past fall, we trained fourteen, over 1,400 students in the area in bullying prevention services, and out of those 1,400 students, 960 of them were here in Haywood County. So, each fall, we provide bullying prevention, and then each spring, we go back again to Haywood County Schools and provide conflict resolution to help them build those skills. We will continue to do our trainings this spring, and then, as Tony mentioned, with all of the Haywood County Schools cuts, we realize we're a very tiny piece of that, that the community is still reeling from and will be in the year, like, most likely the years to come. We are, as Tony said, continuing to work with our board, and we've talked with the schools, and are coming up with some fundraising efforts for the 2016-17 school year, because we would like to really be able to provide those services. They're meaningful services, and we've been doing them for over a decade here at Haywood County School, so that's what's underway as far as that goes. So, thank you all for listening to our services, and if you hear about our efforts in the community, you'll know where those come from. We appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
How many, how many work, how many, how many folks do you have doing the mediation, do you think?
We, here, Haywood is our busiest office, you know, as we said, three-quarters of the mediations take place right here over in the Justice Center. We have about 12 active volunteers here in Haywood County and 18 to 20 active volunteers in the area.
They're just volunteering their time to take care of that.
They do. They do. And then Rebecca is our coordinator, and she spends a lot of time in court and working as liaison, just as an informational piece. District Court, the State Legislature of North Carolina until 2011, that was a service that the mediation centers across the state, they're all nonprofits, under the Mediation Network, that was a funded service until 2011. The State Legislature, when it was very tight, cut that service, and so currently, as Tony pointed out, the cost of the service, we have somehow continued to do it, but not easily. So, we're glad to be able to still do it, we're glad we're still doing that service for the county.
Your services are very appreciated, and any time that conflict can be resolved through mediation and discussion versus the court system or law enforcement, it's definitely, you know, a winner for everybody, so we thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
And Mark, you were instrumental, and you and your board in starting mediation in Haywood County. That was more than 10 years ago, so, thank you.
Thank you for getting it started.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? Thank you both. Is there any adjustment to the agenda today? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the February 15, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Hearing none, we'll move to the second item, which is the approval of the Home and Community Care Block Grant for Older Adults Agreement. Ira Dove.
Yes, this is requesting approval for the Home and Community Care Block Grant for older adults. This is, the group has met and attached our budgets and parts of the agreement with the area council on aging for the three services that they're proposing and the funding as appropriate. These services would go to seniors in our area and assist mountain projects, assisting with transportation, senior companion and congregant meals, meals on wheels, and the adult daycare and day, day health programs.
Okay. I believe this has been before us in previous years. Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll continue with the third item of the consent agenda. Mr. David Francis is requesting approval of a resolution in support of affordable housing. And I think this goes back to the hospital.
It does. Yep. Just a little bit of history, back in 2003, the county started working on some affordable housing ideas, and some of those did not quite make it fruition, and part of that is this resolution did not come before the board at that time. So, North Carolina General Statute, 153A, 378, gives counties the authority to sell property for affordable housing, but you have to set, have a set of procedures and standards. And what this resolution outlines is those procedures and standards. What we thought that was important to have as part of our standards is that Haywood County will make applications or partner with federal, state, municipalities, for-profit, and nonprofit entities to provide opportunities for affordable housing. Properties will be sold to entities with extensive experience of developing or rehabilitating properties, preferably persons of low or moderate income, and who agree to do so for affordable housing. Haywood County says also attached covenants and conditions which will assure that the property will be put to public use by the recipient entity to be developed or held by the entity for sale for the lease of persons of low or moderate income. And finally, that the property will be able to be disposed of, the North Carolina General Statute, 168, 267, by private sale and negotiated price, and a notice summarizing the contents of the resolution after a 10-day upset period. I'm sorry, not a 10-day period, it's not an upset period. So, one of the things with the hospital is, you know, with the public hearing that we are having in the next meeting is under this, it's not required, but due to the interest and the, all the moving parts that the sale had, we thought it was in the best interest to be very transparent about the sale of the hospital and how that was happening, but there's going to be a couple of other properties that I hope to bring before the board that will not have to have a public hearing for affordable housing. This statute will provide that, this resolution will provide that as well as the statute does.
Okay, and of course, when we refer to the hospital, we're actually referring to the old.
The old historic hospital, yeah.
Not the current one. And we're hoping that the current application for tax credits will be approved, so that facility can be maintained, both for its historic value and for the that facility can be maintained, both for its historic value and for the value of the low-income housing and housing for veterans.
Yep. This is, we've said in other meetings, you know, these old hospitals, you know, a couple throughout the state have found a home and a purpose with affordable housing. So I think this mirrors up with what this goal of this resolution is and the desires of the board.
And of course, it is within the boundaries of the town of Waynesville, and they're very much in support of our efforts in this regard as well.
Correct, yeah. And we're getting a resolution from them as well, too, as part of the second phase of the application, too.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to old business next, which is request, to request approval to complete the design of the new animal shelter project sufficient for bidding purposes. We have Dale Burris with us, as well as Randy Cunningham of Mountain Design. Welcome Dale and Randy.
Good morning.
I'll also add, there are several members of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee with us today, so thank you for your attendance.
I want to start out by giving a background, and then we'll move forward into the PowerPoint presentation, as well as the handout that Mountain Design has come up with. On April the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners approved programming schematic designs and building elevations based on a piece of property on Jones Cove Road. They completed the schematic master plant, site plan, and that's what we're going to be presenting for a approval, or if we need to change something. That is where we're at today, but we'll have to have the AIA contract that I'll have to bring back to you on the next meeting, I think it's March twenty-first. But this is just a first step to show where Mountain Design has actually come up to, and then once we get through with that, I'll just kind of go over some of the contract documents that will be part of the AIA document, as part of the exhibits. So I'll kind of start out, this is, of course, is Mr. Randy Cunningham with Mountain Design Architects and Planners. He's come up with this design along with Animal Arts. Animal Arts is one of the larger, I'll let Randy explain on that a little bit further, but they're one of the larger companies or design firms for this type of work as a consultant to an architect, and they are, they are how this, a vital portion of this as well as a designer, Mountain Design. This is the property on Jones Cove Road, shows the parking area, the facility, as it is being presented to you today, based on the floor plan, and also a future area for barn. Of course, at the rear portion of this property, there is ample area for walking animals, people can kind of get used to the animal that they're expected to adopt, or whatever that may be. This is the actual floor plan as a schematic design based on the assessment that was completed by Animal Arts. This was designed in conjunction with Mountain Design, and this is where I kind of have to run, turn it over to Mr. Cunningham, because I'd rather him fill in the blanks on this portion of it.
Good morning.
Morning Randy.
Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at all of this, but basically, Animal Arts is one of the, one of the finest animal shelter architectural consultants in the country, and they came here, as you probably know, and we met with a large group of people, they got a lot of input, and basically input, they took the input that we got from Mr. Teague and the consultants here, these people sitting out here in the audience, and they took that and took their expertise in knowing what needs assessment would be for this particular project. They looked at all the intake and so forth for Haywood County and where it stands over the last years, and that's where this floor plan came from. Basically, right now, as you know, there are some, you know, some deficiencies at the existing animal shelter that this one addresses. It has the number of spaces that are, they think the needs are for the county. It was a little bit of a back and forth thing to make sure that we weren't, you know, doing anything that we didn't need to do, or something that was more a pie in the sky type thing, but this is based on that. It has had input since then from various people, and that's where this floor plan comes from. You'll see that this particular animal shelter is going to be, hopefully, you'll see in the three D renderings, too, it's going to be a place that I'm hoping that people will like to come here. It's also an adoption center, not just a place where dogs are kept and, you know, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of thought been put into how the cats and the dogs are taken care of during this process, and I'd probably leave it to you to ask any questions if you have any about that plan.
Now, we, I read the packet of information, and I know that the current center is woefully inadequate, both for the public and for the employees that work there, as well as, of course, the animals, but.
And they, they do an outstanding job with what they have, but it's just, times have changed, and the project when it was built, that, a lot of it has to do with mechanicals and caging and just, and right now, they're caging their, the cages are, the runs are designed so that you eat and sleep in one area and do the other things in the other. Right now, they're having to use both sides on many occasions, so it is, it's not large enough, let's put it like that.
And cleaning out, or cleaning up after animals in the same area that you expect your employees to take their lunch in is unacceptable.
It also, you know, this, this one is going to be designed to be, all of our, all of our designs are this way, but this one to be sustainable, to be, we want it to be efficient, and we want it to be longstanding and always timeless, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of thought put into things that you may not even see, but if you're in the space, you will know, like, for instance, just sound and how you take care of barking dogs, and if you get a whole bunch of hounds going at one time, they can be pretty loud. The, just the, to be able to keep it clean, to be able to do all those things, and a lot of thoughts going into those particular parts of this design.
Ventilation is another big issue.
Ventilation is huge, and it is, it's a little more expensive than your normal office building, but you have to have a certain amount of air exchanges, that's a requirement that needs to be followed, and it needs to be correct for this type of facility.
And it's not present in our current facility?
It is not present, no.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak on that, once we go through the design, if you don't mind.
Please.
Yes.
We also, this, this front elevation right here, the first part, the building you're seeing right here on the front with the glass, that is a community room, that is a multipurpose room. Part of that was, the thought was, there needed to be a place for training, for information, a place where you could meet and discuss with people, hopefully try to, some educational processes and things in there, which I think is a lot that has happened in Haywood County in the past few years. And a lot of our sponsors, if you will, like Sorges and Fur and places like that, that have made a big difference, but that's what that's for. The actual adoption center, as you see right there, there's a, there's two different doors. There's one for intake and one for adoption center. So if you wanted to take your kids or grandkids here to look at an animal, it's going to be a pleasant experience. And the idea is that you can come in here, come in, it's festive, the first thing you see when you come in is the puppies, and you go from there, there's a place for, to view dogs, cats, and cats. There's been a lot of research, and Dr. Hammett knows a lot more about this than I do, and Animal Arts does, too, but to keep a cat from getting stressed in this situation. We don't really have that now to a great degree, so there's been a lot of research done in that, that field. What this is, is to try to take that and make it a more pleasant place for the animals, but then a more pleasant place for the people and the workers, and to be able to adopt We're trying to make the building as maintenance-free as we possibly can. I don't think there is any such thing as a completely maintenance-free building, but what the materials and the things we're trying to use here will be as maintenance-free as we think we can make them. There's products themselves, a lot of research we're doing into that. We're actually fortunate enough right now that we're doing a large addition to REACH over Nashville, which is an emergency animal hospital, and we're learning a lot of things from that that we're going to implement into here as well. The site does work well, it's a nice site. There is some manipulation of grade out there, but there is, the back part of the site will still be a wooded area, we're going to have some nice outside space, there are some outside runs here, we don't have that now, so there's going to be some, it's going to be a nice looking and nice working facility, and the site does work well. We, and I might point out, just when we're doing these, just so you don't think, because I don't want to take full credit for anything, but Mountain Design is kind of the lead or the architectural part of it, but Animal Arts is, like I say, the consultant that has a lot of wisdom and knowledge. We're also using a lot of other consultants, like our PM and E people with Reese Nolan and McRath, and with SKA for structural, Daniel Hype with Broad Brooks for landscaping and so forth, Patrick Bradshaw with Civil Design, so we've got a lot of people that are putting input into this project, and they've all been really good so far, and we're hoping to keep carrying it forward.
Any questions Randy?
Just a comment, if you ride by there, you would not, if I look at this building, you wouldn't know that's an animal shelter. Could be a doctor's office or anything else, if you just look, so I think that helps in killing that stereotype.
Right.
Of what an animal shelter looks like.
We're trying to get away from that stereotype of a dog, hound, if you will.
Institutional appearance.
And that, that is the trend, and Haywood County's done a really good job so far, so hopefully this will continue.
There'll be office space for, that we don't currently have for animal control. I mean, we see their vehicles out riding around, and when you call, you know, for a stray or a dangerous animal, or rabies, something like that, you know, these people basically work out of their vehicles, for the most part, so it'll at least give them a professional place to conduct their business, so.
And, you know, I want to go back over to one thing that you mentioned, with, they did this assessment, and they looked at the past, the present, what we have, and then they designed this thing to meet our current needs and the needs that's going forward. So we've not got a lot of, even though it's going to be a very catching facility, it's going, you know, I mean, we're not getting a lot of fluff, it's to do what's necessary, and then to follow the guidelines is where a lot of expense is that you're required to, you know, with the heating and air exchanges, the cleaning and the stuff like that.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct, and what they did, it's not just for immediate needs, but they tried to look as to what, based on the past and where we're headed and that kind of thing. They do this all over the country, so they're, they're pretty good at it.
I noticed also, this has space for medical, that we don't really have right now.
Yes.
We probably just have a, do you have a table maybe, or?
It's the kitchen.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
Which is the same place where they were.
Dr. Hammett, come on up.
I'm Dr. Kristen Hammett. I've been working with the animal shelter for a number of years, and at this point, there are, is no medical facilities in, or examination facilities in the current animal shelter. There, we examine them primarily in the kitchen, which is also where the cat litter pans are washed and the dog food bowls are cleaned, because that's the only space that we've got. Otherwise, it's in the halls or the aisles of the dog runs, which is usually deafening. I don't know how we passed OSHA requirements there with decibels, because it is very loud when you get a few plot hounds in there going. The air exchanges are definitely insufficient for veterinary health, particularly with cats. When cats are stressed, cats frequently will exude respiratory viruses, which they may or may not show symptoms of, but they're contagious to everybody else, and currently one cat sneezes, and they're directly across the aisle from the other cats, which are then infected. We've had several outbreaks of upper respiratory tract disease in kennel cough in dogs recently, so medical facilities are really, at this point, not present. Our current way of dealing with contagious animal disease, which is the only way that our facility allows right now, is euthanasia, and Haywood County can do better than that and should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale?
Okay, just to follow through, it's kind of hard to follow up with these two, they've pretty well covered everything. To, to get back on to where we would need to be for the March twenty-first commissioner meeting, I've actually added in what you will see as Exhibit B, that will be attached to the AIA document. It's, it's to actually award the contract for design to Mountain Design today, and then design contract approval on March twenty-first. And we want to tighten this timeframe up, but to be able to give Mountain Design time to actually be able to design this, we would actually be, they would give us plans by May the sixteenth to review, and hopefully, we can sit down in a one-day meeting, turn those plans back over to Mr. Cunningham, and they can turn them around, but we did add in a four-day time period in there. So then we would have the progress plans delivered around that same time to Haywood County Inspection Department, and then we would have bidding on June the fifteenth for the project of two thousand and sixteen, and receive bids July the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Then we would request, I'll be coming back to request award of contract on July the eighteenth. I know this sounds like a progressive timeframe, but to be able to get this project out of the ground before fall of the year, we need to move forward. Then we would have lowest responsible, responsive bidder under the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash one twenty-nine, be presented to commissioners by August the first. And my expected, my tentative schedule that I've got set forth, and I've spoke to Mr. Cunningham about this, is to be able to do a groundbreaking ceremony either August the thirtieth, but no later than September the seventh. Now, I may be pushing this a little hard, but I actually reviewed my timeframe with Mr. Cunningham, and at the time, he agreed, so I think he still does. Then, of course, Exhibit A was, will, it will be in the contract, was the original proposed amount that was the Haywood County Board of Commissioners approved on April the twentieth. Now, on the follow-up with what, excuse me, what Dr. Hammett and Chairman, you've mentioned about is the Guidelines of Standard Care in Animal Shelters, that's another document you got in your packet. These studies are based on American Veterinary and Medical Association regarding HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. They've got a broad range for ambient temperature for animals, which is sixty to eighty degrees, and then the relative humidity. And then the relative humidity, which we cannot control at the current facility, it's impossible. You either open the windows or close the windows and keep the heat on. Fresh air, of course, is very essential to the well-being of animals, as Dr. Hammett just mentioned, as well as the staff. And, you know, they expect between 10 and 20 room air exchanges per hour. That's more than most of our buildings actually require for our human space, which is, if you go on down under the 2012 International Mechanical Code, office areas only require five CFM minimum per person, and then public spaces are the same as well. The current facility, as it is designed, and I don't like using the term, but, you know, it's been brought up, as we're looking at an animal services project where that was animal control. It was, I still feel like it's two totally different types of design, I guess. And they were, it was designed with oil-fired furnaces. Well, that being the case, oil-fired furnaces with a heat pump, it works well, except when you're trying to bring in fresh air, remove contaminants, and be able to maintain the facility and the cost. So on to what Dr. Hammett was mentioning about OSHA 1926, it does not define an animal control facility, but does defer back to air quality for people. Now, I had to spend a lot of time looking for this information before I felt comfortable presenting it to you, to anyone, public, commissioners, anyone, because I wanted to make sure that our quality measures that I found were meeting those guidelines. And, you know, without adequate ventilation, you know, chemicals, waste cleanup, we can't meet that at the current facility. And so with the new design that, or this design that we're looking into by putting a flush valve trough that we saw in other buildings, we're actually putting one in the EMS base. It's more or less a area to wash into a simple trough, and one flush valve flushes the whole entire system. Of course, they'll have multiple in this one, but it's set up to where you can push one flush valve, just like using a flush valve on a toilet, to flush the entire system out once it's been washed into this trough, this area. So those are the items that, you know, we need to look into, and of course, I think this has been touched on several different times. You know, the facility was constructed in 1988. I read an editorial, I think somebody made a comment about this, and I just wanted to touch on some of the things that had been mentioned. You know, construction materials at the time, there was no real requirements under the guidelines for energy efficiency, none, I don't think, at that time. So in 1988, you know, we had issues with no insulation. Well, while you can still go back into a facility such as this, but now you're going to have to actually fur out the walls, put rigid insulation in, you're still going to cut down on square footage. It does not help with the square footage problem that they're having with animals today. Soundproofing measures. I don't see with the low ceiling, I've, we've talked to several different people, as well as Animal Arts also and Mountain Design, have looked at this and trying to cut down on the actual sound levels in this facility. It's all hard surface. It's just like this room right here, except we have carpet, cuts back on some of the sound, where in there, we all know that animals and carpet don't go well together. So that's one of the issues, or one of the larger issues. Adequate storage, basically, I don't want to speak for Mr. T., Dolte, but they don't have any. There is no storage. We store a lot of their stuff for them in our wirehouse, just so they don't have to take up their space. Traffic flow is probably one of the, one of the bigger issues to look at in this area is because whenever, I've been down there on Saturday and seeing how many people come in to adopt animals, or whether they're bringing them in or whether they're adopting them, I'm not sure, but there's not enough parking at all. The housing, the, you know, we can go, I've, you know, I've bulleted every bit of this out, but, you know, the rabies quarantine, they've got three kennel runs, I think it's three?
Two or three.
Three. So, you know, if there is a rabies outbreak or one animal, and I'm not a veterinarian at all, but if there happens to be one, where do they keep them all? They can't keep them in the same cage. We know that because the state says we can't. Our exchanges are inadequate. Our exchanges, if they do, in place, that they will be doing today, you can probably go up there and make a visit today, the HVAC or heat will be on and the windows will be open to be able to allow those adequate air exchanges. Now, that's not very efficient, in my opinion. So I'm kind of going to stop at that point and touched on the wastewater. Whenever this was originally designed, it had two-inch waste coming from each kennel run, but these kennel runs were supposed to be across, all the way across. They have to, due to the amount of animals they have, they're having to use each of the small kennel runs, as Mr. Cunningham mentioned before. So they're having to eat, clean the area and everything else all at the same time the staff is for the animals. They're not eating there, the animals are eating there. I make myself very clear. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. You see the document and like to move forward with this as soon as possible to meet those timelines.
Any questions, Dale?
Probably going to add, I mean, what we've got is we've got an inadequate, probably built inadequate in 1988 to handle the problem, and as you said, it was more of a control situation than a services facility. And we've transformed, in 30 years, almost 30 years, I mean, it's more toward animal services. And so we got a totally inadequate facility. We've got more animals than the facility can address, and we've got a problem out there and needs to be addressed. And we've been assessed, and this facility is, will meet our situation now and in the future. It's not being overbuilt, it's being, you know, and meeting all the standards that you must meet today when you're preparing a facility like this.
Back what you just said on your statement, I think we're building it just a little bit above the future. If you really go back on the document, you would have to build it much larger, and that's where we started out at, but.
We're not overkilling it, that's what I'm saying.
That is correct.
And then historically, in the last several years, which I wasn't here, you know, you guys were here a lot longer than I have, there's been an effort to upgrade our facilities in Haywood County, our aging facilities that don't meet the criteria that we need, and this is probably the last facility that's not been addressed in the county as far as updating or so. Okay, that's all I got to say.
I also reviewed the census numbers over the past year out there, and every month was more than 100% of capacity, some as high as almost 150% of capacity in terms of the number of animals. So that's why you're having to double up out there, which causes the problems that Dr. Hammett alluded to. And I think on one occasion, the only way to separate the animals or quarantine them, I think a volunteer had to take them home and put them in their garage, so.
We, I think we actually had, we had one in our wirehouse that we kept heating. It was a very nice animal. We took very good care of it while it was in our warehouse, but we did keep one. We hated somebody, adopted it, it was kind of a friend of ours real quick, but it was there for quarantine as well. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions of Dale, Mr. Cunningham, Dr. Hammett? All right, then, hearing none, would entertain a motion to approve the, to complete the design of the new animal shelters project sufficient for bidding purposes, and that would include having Dale return the next meeting with the AIA contract as he described. So I would entertain that motion at this point.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Dale. Randy, thank you. And thanks to Dr. Hammett as well for your help. Okay, we'll move to new business. First up is Ira Dove requesting approval to waive permitting fees for the Junealaska Sanitary District for their equipment warehouse. Dale, I mean, Ira?
Yes, the Junealaska Sanitary Committee is, or District, is wanting to build a metal storage warehouse, about 4,500 square feet. They have, as you're aware, they have an elected board. They're also providing governmental service and providing sanitary water, and they're also working with us to try and get a Golden Leaf grant. And in addition, they often waive permit fees that we request if it's a tap fee for governmental purposes, like the community college, so they've done that in the past. And for those reasons, I'm requesting that tap fee, it's $1,440, or the building permit fee of $1,440 be waived on this facility.
I think it's good to have reciprocal agreements like that.
Well, they did that first, so they.
Right, right. Any questions of Ira? If not, then would entertain a motion that we approve the waiver of the permitting fees for the Junealaska Sanitary District for their equipment warehouse.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. And move next to Patrick Johnson, requesting approval of the 2016-2017 Consolidated Agreement between Haywood County Health and Human Services and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you. Good morning. The fiscal year 2016 consolidated agreement is an annually renewed agreement between the North Carolina Department of Public, Department of Health and Human Services and the Haywood County Health and Human Services Agency. This annually renewed agreement outlines the requirements that the Haywood County Public Health Services Division must meet in order to continue receiving state funding for our various programs and for the purposes of maintaining and promoting the advancement of public health in Haywood County. The 32-page document covers the responsibilities of the Health Department and the funding stipulations of the state for which we are requesting your approval for us to move forward with this contract.
Okay. For those who may not know, the, when the consolidation between the old DSS and the Health Department took place, we had a Health Director. So Patrick now is in that position as what would be known as the old Health Director.
Public Health Services Division Director.
Right, right, so, so welcome to Haywood County. I know you're relatively new, but appreciate your contributions.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Okay. Any questions regarding the consolidated agreement? Okay, all right, then, hearing none, would entertain a motion that the fiscal year 2017 consolidated agreement, agreement as described, be approved and that with that approval that the chairman be authorized to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have, you're not Sheriff Christopher, but.
No, sir.
Jeff Ainge is with us. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Yes, standing in for Sheriff Christopher today, who is at the Institute of Government in Chapel Hill. I'll be up here, I suppose, for the next four items on the agenda. The first is the request for approval of the records retention policy for the sheriff's office. Basically, within the last year, the statewide for the sheriff's offices across the state, the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources of North Carolina has gone through and looked at revision policies and for retention of public records, be it written and/or video. We are in compliance with that now, which they had, based upon a schedule that's set forth under Chapters, General Statute 122 and 132, and also based upon the North Carolina Administrative Code 07.0510. With that, we're asking to adopt this resolution that we are now in compliance with the new regulations as set forth by the Natural and Cultural Resources section. You'll see in front of you this resolution. Would you like me to read it, or do you want to review it?
No, I think, unless someone ever wants it to be read, it's fairly self-explanatory. Chip, you've looked at it?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, then, if there's no questions, would entertain a motion to approve the records retention policy for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, having been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with the state statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll continue on with Jeff. Next is requesting approval of a resolution authorizing county inmates to work on projects that benefit Haywood County. Jeff?
Yes, sir. Once again, thank you, commissioners. We're asking for passage of resolution regarding the use of inmates to work within Haywood County on projects that benefit Haywood County. Resolution is based upon North Carolina General Statute 162-58, which authorizes the Haywood County Board of Commissioners to enact a resolution and all necessary rules and regulations for work on projects that benefit units of the state or local government by persons convicted of misdemeanors or felonies and imprisoned in the local confinement facility or satellite jail slash work release units of their respective counties, which obviously is Haywood. We are asking, and it's also in, covered in General Statute 162-59 as well, too. 162-58 authorizes the county to do that, and 162-59 actually authorizes the sheriff of the county or the jail administrator to basically set forth the criteria and to delineate who is eligible and who is not eligible to work on those projects.
You can save a lot of taxpayer dollars with the help of the inmate.
Yes, sir.
And it's all voluntary on their part, right?
It is voluntary on their part, and most are very, very appreciative. It gives them the opportunity to be out and moving around and so forth, and they feel their worth. It's certainly helped on recidivism when we have the opportunity to allow this for people. As you know, Sheriff Christopher and the county have taken on a huge role in reduction of recidivism by putting in place resources and that are available throughout the community, and this is just another added resource that gives incentive for those people to do the right thing.
Right. And Chip, have you looked at this as well?
Yes, I have, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions of Jeff?
Just a comment, Jeff. I've worked with some of your inmates on litter pickup, and I can't keep up with them. They do a great job.
That is exactly right, and we want to do that to help. It's one of those issues that it certainly benefits the county, and it helps to beautify, it helps in a lot of ways, and it gives them incentive as well, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, would entertain a motion that the resolution authorizing county inmates to work on projects that benefit Haywood County be approved.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. And we'll continue on with Jeff.
The next is a resolution based with, well, the next two are resolutions based upon the final components of the in-progress, under-construction, new 911 communication center that'll serve Haywood County. The first resolution is the, is the request to approve the lowest responsible responsive bid to wireless communications for the new 911 center base station radio equipment systems. Wireless Communications proposed a turnkey proposal to Haywood County with quality communication and equipment services. Wireless is offering Haywood County a top-tier Motorola communication system. The base station radio equipment will include repeaters, base stations, antennas, and COAX for the entire new 911 center. Wireless Communications will also be providing Haywood County a superb radio system that will not only both satisfy the current needs, but will also serve the county for many years to come, and this will be paid for out of the existing grant that was awarded to Haywood County as well.
Okay. Any questions of Jeff? If not, would entertain a motion that Wireless Communications Incorporated If not, would entertain a motion that Wireless Communications Incorporated, as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, be approved for the base station radio equipment in the amount of $122,590.51 from the North Carolina E911 Grant Project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, we'll continue then with the second, radio dispatch console equipment.
Okay, thank you once again, Commissioners. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, didn't recognize our 911 Communications Director, Shanda Morgan, who's here this morning, and also Patrice Reeves and Dave Walton with Wireless Communications that, for any questions that might arise. The fourth, fourth item in the request we have today is for approval to the lowest responsible responsive bid to wireless communications for the AVTEC radio consoles to be located in the 911 center. Wireless Communications proposed the AVTEC Scout Voice Over IP Dispatch Console System that is designated for redundancy, an automatic failover. Wireless will install eight positions, end-to-end internet protocol, radio dispatch console systems, designed for mission-critical dispatch within the 911 center to service of Haywood County. Radio console equipment allows the 911 operator to use all the radios from one single interface, which is, is not the case currently. It also controls paging for emergency responders, as well as the ability to connect users from different radio systems to speak to one another. So it not only puts in place, it increases our interoperability, which has been a huge shortcoming for us in Haywood County for many years. These radio consoles are software-based, and will integrate the radio-based station equipment previously approved, and believe, we believe there's a huge benefit in being a truly turnkey operation for Haywood County with this, so this will be a great advantage in our final system integration, and this should bring us to the point where we are in our project now, deep in our project, and this would certainly tie the final ends of it up. And this will also be paid for out of 911 grant funding.
Okay. Any questions of Jeff on this aspect? If not, then would entertain a motion to approve Wireless Communications Incorporated as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the Haywood County 911 Radio Dispatch Console Equipment. This would be from the North Carolina E911 Grant Project in the amount of $287,047.80.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, General.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, next up is Jim Presley, our EMS Director, requesting approval of the purchase for an additional EMS ambulance. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. A little bit of history on today's request is this current budget year, we got funding to do two remount ambulances, meaning we used older ambulance boxes that were refurbishable, and put them on new chassis. We have a unique opportunity right now. We have one remaining ambulance box that's worthy of remounting, and we have an opportunity now to piggyback essentially off of ourself, and procure the third remount ambulance this fiscal year for the same amount of money, which was $98,000, 98,328,33, to be exact. This will be the last of the Wheel Coach boxes that are structurally remountable on the new Dodge chassis, so essentially, we're getting a third requesting funds to do that, as it would give us a third ambulance purchase this fiscal year for 98,328, as opposed to a new cost of an ambulance, which is around $140,000 to $150,000. So, if we can get this done, that's a good way to have a new ambulance on the road and save the taxpayers $50,000 versus the cost of a new ambulance.
Okay. Any questions of you? And the 100, roughly $100,000 we're talking about, and just getting into Julie's next item, which is, you know, where do we find the money for this? And basically, it's, as I understand from, an increase in various revenues, and sales tax collections are up. Julie?
It is basically sales tax. When we budgeted for sales tax last May, we budgeted an amount that we thought was a good conservative amount. It looks like it's coming in a little bit higher, so when we had the opportunity to find, to buy this ambulance, I looked to see if we had any revenues that were coming in a little bit higher, or revenues we hadn't budgeted, and I did find some, in order to put $100,000 in the budget, so we're not hitting contingency or fund balance or that type of thing.
Okay, good, good. Are any questions of Jim, or Julie? Okay, if not, then would entertain a motion that we approve the purchase of the EMS ambulance as described?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, and we'll move to the next item, which is the budget amendment to pay for this. So Julie?
Thank you, Jim, and have a good day.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Well, I just, I just stole my own thunder, but here is the budget amendment for the ambulance. You will notice that there's a refund of prior-year expense, which is tax, sales tax refunds, that's all related to the sales tax revenue that we have coming in. We did get about $40,000 in sales tax refunds. The other $60,000, it looks like the 1% sales tax that is not designated for the schools is coming in a little bit higher. Those that are designated for the schools are coming in higher, too, but we didn't want to use those, of course, for this ambulance. So this is a county sales tax for $60,000, and the tax refund, sales tax refunds for 40, to give us the $100,000, like I talked about a few minutes ago.
Okay. Any questions of Julie? If not, would entertain a motion that the budget amendment as presented be approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And we'll finish up new business with Ira Dove, with appointments to the zoning board of adjustments for Clyde.
Yes, the Mayor and Board of Alderman of Clyde are recommending the two applicants. We have Louise, also known as Betty, Fagan, and John Hemingway.
Any questions of Ira? If not, would entertain a motion that Louise Fagan and John Hemingway be appointed to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, that concludes the new business portion of our agenda. At this point, would entertain a motion that we enter into closed session for the purpose of reviewing closed-session minutes, 143-318.11A1, Attorney Client Privilege, 143-318.11A3, and Economic Development, 143-318.11A4.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we enter into closed session, thank you. Okay, we have returned from closed session. At this point, I will ask for a series of motions to address closed-session minutes from prior closed sessions. First, would be a motion to approve and release after redaction closed-session minutes dated August 3, 2015, regarding economic development, and August 17, 2015, regarding economic development.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Secondly, would be to approve and release closed-session minutes dated September 18, 2015, economic development, September 21, 2015, economic development, October 5, 2015, closed-session minutes, and November 2, 2015, Attorney Client Privilege, economic development.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next would be to approve but not yet release, subject to review at a later date, minutes dated November 2, 2015, economic development, November 16, 2015, economic development, November 16, 2015, economic development, December 7, 2015, Attorney Client Privilege, December 7, 2015, economic development, December 21, 2015, economic development, and January 4, 2016, Attorney Client Privilege. Inter, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And finally, minutes to approve, but that will not be released, September 21, 2015, personnel, December 7, 2015, Attorney Client Privilege, and January 4, 2016, Attorney Client Privilege.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Is there any other business for the board? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.